Welcome to the meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, August 12, 2014. Tonight is our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and attending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that anybody planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens' logbook, which is up there. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and this is in reference to Board Policy 8340. Welcome. We're going to start with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Brown.
(Pledge of Allegiance) "To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
We're going to start off with a first notification that the board met an executive session tonight, August 12, 2014, from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. or 7:35 p.m. to discuss matters of personnel, potential litigation, and negotiations. The second item is, we're going to do our recognitions and proclamations this time of year. We have people we're going to acknowledge that have done very well, and Dr. Dietrich, why don't you take that?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are pleased this evening to recognize members of the North Penn High School Future Business Leaders of America, and we have with us this evening members of that group and their advisor, Linda Westerland. Mrs. Westerland?
Hi. How are you? I am the advisor of the North Penn Chapter of FBLA, and I have several outstanding students with me here tonight. Unfortunately, this isn't the entire group in the summer with vacations and things. It's hard to get them all together, but I will read the names of everyone, even those that aren't here. Several of these students competed in events as a team, so I am keeping the teams together, and I'll introduce them that way. Just a little bit is what FBLA does. It allows the students to compete in various business-related events. They start at the local high school level. If they advance, they can go to the regions and compete. If they place at the region, they can go to states and compete, and if they place at states, they go to nationals. So we have students here tonight that have placed either at the states and/or at nationals. Several of these kids did place in the top 10 at the national level as well this past summer. So we'll start off with Oscar, Aramis Louis, and Kevin Chen, and they placed second at the State Conference in Hospitality Management, and they placed third in the nation, which is really a tremendous feat for them in hospitality management as well.[193.62][193.62](Applause). Jeffrey Yan is not here, however. He did call us and said he went to the high school by mistake, so he's trying to get over here as fast as he can. He may make it before we're finished, but, okay.
(Inaudible)
Have him text me while he's driving. I don't know. That's not good. All right. Matt Lung, he placed second in the state in Database Design and Management, and he placed fifth at the National Conference.[232.43][232.43](Applause). Salso Light is not here, but he was part of a team with Steven Blumberg, and Steven's done a lot, so I'm going to ask Steven to not move yet, but they placed fourth at the State Conference in Management Information Systems. Steven also placed fifth in the state in Who's Who in FBLA, and Steven was also part of another team that did partnership with business, and they actually did a partnership with the Penn Suburban Chamber of Commerce. So that was nice, and I plan to continue that partnership as we go. So that team was Steven Blumberg, Jewel Rama, and Marissa Christensen.[275.72][275.72](Applause). We have another team that we own, is a team of three, but only one is able to attend. We have Angelina Maltezos, and she placed seventh in the state in Banking and Financial Systems. The other two members of her team were Chris Mullen and Brad Randall.[303.83][303.83](Applause). Serena Jiang placed third in the state, at the state level, in, what was your event? Business law. Sorry. Business law, and she did qualify to compete at the national level as well, so she was at the National Conference this summer.[326.47][326.47](Applause). Harrison Barclay placed fifth at the state level in Computer Problem Solving.[336.97][336.97](Applause). All right. I have a team of three here, and they did a couple of things as well. So first of all, they placed third at the State Conference in E-Business. They also placed first in the Virtual Chapter Video Contest. We have Max Ives, Jason Roland, and Tyler Velez, and Tyler is not here.[363.72][363.72](Applause). I had another team that is not, neither one of them were able to be here tonight. It's Carolyn Rogeski and Julia Hahn. They placed 10th at the state level in Desktop Publishing. I do have Sarah Bednar and Dorothy Zhang, who also competed in that same event, and they placed fourth at the state level in Desktop Publishing.[388.00][388.00](Applause). Christopher Shea is not with us either. He did place 10th in Help Desk at the State Conference, and I have Jerry Zow, who placed sixth in Insurance Risk and Risk Management at the state level.[412.31][412.31](Applause). And Jeffrey did make it, so he's here. He placed third in the State Conference in Database Design and Management, and he placed eighth at the National Conference this summer.[427.06][427.06](Applause). And that's it.
(Inaudible)
I will. Thank you.
(Inaudible) that are on tonight's agenda, and perhaps also some updates regarding some things that some folks in the audience may be interested in, I do have a couple of other things I'd like to cover here. I am really, really pleased to announce that yesterday we received word that we're in the top 5% in the state for our school performance profile scores. We truly do have an exceptional academic achievement in North Penn School District, and I thank our teachers, our support staff, and our administrators for all that's done to help our students to achieve. Also, I'm pleased to report that this year we had a record number of students completing our Advanced Placement courses and testing, and we've earned national recognition for North Penn High School, in part due to that participation in our Advanced Placement program, so we're really pleased to say we had, again, a record number of students involved with that. I can also give an update that we had extremely positive feedback from our teachers regarding our online learning options that we had in place for the last two days of the school year. You will recall, we had a very difficult winter with lots of snowy days and lost days that we had to cancel school, so we worked hard to be able to put together the opportunity for teachers to complete professional development online and have some selection in those opportunities, and we got extremely good feedback on that. We were able to accomplish our professional development goals while giving those teachers an opportunity to have some selection in things that were very meaningful to them, so I'm pleased about that. I can also report that, just a few weeks ago, actually, I was asked by the Governor Corbett's team to be on a panel with the governor to talk about some issues that are confronting the state right now, namely pension reform and also property tax issues, and that was some opportunity that North Penn's school district was represented by their superintendent, and I was really pleased to be able to do that. Certainly, there's an effort there to try to do something with pension reform, and we need to see that through. I'm also pleased to report that we're working really hard with some things that are going on with the SLOs. That's the Student Learning Objectives that the state is rolling out. We've had workshops this summer. Our teachers have come in and done a tremendous job there to be geared up and to learn about the SLO process and to get a head start on getting those in place so that we can get off to a great start. So I'm really proud of our teachers for the efforts they've done this summer to be able to learn about the SLOs, and we're working hard to try to manage that so that we can accomplish the objectives of the state and yet really give the teachers an opportunity to truly focus on teaching students and not on completing paperwork and that sort of a thing. We have some agenda items tonight, and I can also give you also another update regarding the typical August time period. We are monitoring our class sizes, as we always do in August, and in particular, I know there were some folks that came to the ECP Committee meeting last evening to talk about Nap Elementary in particular and concerns there about 6th grade, and I want to assure you that we are monitoring that very closely. We are going to take a look at the 87ths now. It was down to 85, now it's back up again to 87, students that are presently enrolled in that class of 6th graders at Nap, and we also want to look at our appointments through our registrar, and if, in fact, we do have that number of students that are coming, and every year, it's difficult because we're trying to ascertain, in fact, who is also disenrolling, we have the ability then to be able to add another teacher there. We don't have many options left anymore at Nap. Nap is a school that is really growing tremendously. We're up to 662 students at Nap, so that's now our largest elementary school enrollment. It's a school that is really bursting at the seams. So we don't have many options left facility-wise. Next option would really mean probably putting art in a cart. We're already putting music on a cart. We added a first grade by taking one away from 6th grade. Now we had some additional enrollees in 6th grade, so now we're back up to 87 again. So by putting music on a cart, we kind of used up that option, and the next option really would be to have to put art in a cart to be able to accommodate an additional classroom. But I want to assure everyone, if you're interested in the Nap issue or in any of the other schools, because we also are monitoring the class sizes in all of our schools, but I know that some folks came last evening to ECP specifically about Nap, I want to assure you, when we are monitoring that very closely, we are going to see if we can verify the actual attendance of those 87 to see, in fact, if they are planning to come and not planning anybody to disenroll, and likewise, we'll look at the appointments through the registrar, but we are prepared to add one more teacher there if necessary and move our art in a cart. And then we're also monitoring all the other hotspots in all the other schools also. Another agenda item this evening is in regard to transferring funds into the medical fund for the benefit of our employees and to set aside some additional money for pension costs, and this is particularly important, given that at this point in time pension reform has remained elusive, and all the actuarial estimates indicate that the system is underfunded, so we resign pretty much to the probable eventuality that we're going to continue to have very high pension costs into the foreseeable future. So fortunately, we're able to move a little more money into that area there. Also then, looking ahead, we anticipate being able to transfer some money into the Capital Reserve Fund from under expending the budget. The money that we're moving tonight is due to the fact that our revenues have come in above the expenditures, and then we have some other areas where we were able to under expend the budget, and we're going to transfer that to the Capital Reserve Fund, and that will happen as soon as we have a precise number, as all the transfers are made internally in conjunction with the auditors that are in the district. And then we also have on tonight's agenda motions, recommendations to approve the new Administrator Compensation Agreement that would provide for salary increases for our administrators and adjustments to the medical plan for the administrators, and likewise, recommendation to increase the wages of our support staff, the non-unionized group of support staff, along with a new medical plan for them. And we're really working hard with our unionized groups and continuing to negotiate with them with the expectation that any agreement reached would also include the same plan for all groups, and I think that's very important. We certainly do appreciate the efforts of all of our employees. I mentioned some specifically earlier this evening, groups that are working really hard to gear up for this coming school year. All of our folks are working really hard, and we appreciate their service very much and what they're able to do to impact the lives of so many students in our community as we educate them. And we did have a meeting last evening when, overall, the medical changes, the feedback on that was great, and the meeting was well-received, so we're pleased that that happened. And then, this being the last meeting in August, I can assure everybody that we're ready to open schools on the Tuesday after Labor Day, and we look forward to another great year. So thank you for that opportunity, and I'll move now to the next item, if you would.
For those who are interested, this meeting will be rebroadcast on Comcast 28 and Fayos 29 on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at 7:30 p.m., and on Thursday, Friday, and Monday at 12:30 p.m. That's when the rebroadcasting of this meeting will occur. We usually make that announcement when we have proclamations because parents want to see it. All right. We're going to move forward with the audience of citizens. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, please feel free to step forward, state your name and address, and sign our audience of citizens' logbook.
My name is Gwen Pescatori. My address, 104 Village Drive, North Wales, PA 19454. What was your other question that you asked me? Was that it?
That was it. Just on the book.
Okay. I am up here to kind of hit on what Dr. Dietrich already mentioned, which is class size at Nap Elementary. We touched on the subject last night about our concern of putting so many students in the classroom. There are several issues that we are concerned about. One is the quality of the learning environment. That, you know, to, there's so much research. I spent the last four days reading research paper after research paper, and there is nothing that supports a positive learning environment with so many children, and most of them say, you know, under 20 students is the best option. And clearly, we understand that's not realistic with the budget concerns, but 29 is extreme. So our request is that we bring it down to a little more reasonable, you know, like where we have other classes where it's 22 and 24. The safety in an event of emergency. I have been in those mods several occasions, and with 25 students, I can barely get in there to take pictures for the yearbook. I can barely get through those desks. I don't know how you safely evacuate 25 children, let alone 29 or 30, and then on occasions when you have, say, Grandparents' Day or something, you've got more children or more people in there. I don't know how you get them out of that room safely with all of the practice. And in an event of a lockdown, where do you hide them? I mentioned last night, I mean, they have a tiny little closet that I think you could hold a dozen students unless you start stacking them. So that would be our other concern. And then behavior management. With 30, you know, 29 students, you have a teacher that's trying to divide their time between all of these students, which means there's more downtime for other students to possibly be distracted and to get out of control, which means now the teacher is spending more time managing behavior instead of teaching. So it just puts our children at a disadvantage. I know Dr. Holman had mentioned last night the point that our 7th grade last year did not exceed our national norms for, I think it was the, I'm drawing a blank, not the PSSAs, but for our test scores, and I just feel like this is setting our kids up for a disadvantage by putting more kids in a 6th grade classroom and then sending them off to middle school in a larger and new learning environment, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Casa. I live at 139 Gwynmont Drive, North Wales, PA 19454, and I have two children who've gone to Nap. I have a 6th grader currently. We've seen Nap's progress from 1st grade through 6th grade, as I'm sure many other concerned parents who have also shown up here on very short notice have also. To reinforce some of the points that Gwen so eloquently made, we're aware that there are at least three other attempts in the past few years to also consolidate classes at other elementary schools. It doesn't seem like any of those plans, to my knowledge, have yet stuck. They've been a failure. So on behalf of other parents discussing this, we don't see why Nap Elementary should continue this experiment of seeing if we could be at 28, 29, pushing a threshold for what the district guidelines are for capacity. Furthermore, Nap Elementary, as many of you are probably already aware, is a fantastic school. It has a great culture. As many students with English as a second language, and your own website, the district website even states studies which say students with English as a second language needs succeed or have much better success when the classroom size is smaller. I'm not sure how much of that has been taken into consideration also with this planning. One of the other questions in discussing with other parents and families, once again, in a very short amount of time, I learned about this Friday. I'm not sure how many other parents have just learned about this in the past day or two, but one of the other concerns that came up is, when this has been implemented before or just at Nap, what studies have been done? Have any studies been done about this consolidation before? If they have, are we allowed to have access to those studies? If they haven't, once again, why are we proceeding with this plan? And we say that with all due respect, we know these are very tough decisions to make across the district, and you've all done a fantastic job, but I would be remiss not to express myself and to also speak for others who've brought up these very good points. At the end, we just prefer that there's better communication. Accountability on all of our parts comes from communication and transparency. That's where you get accountability from, and we need to set that example for our children. I have to explain to my 6th grader why all of a sudden things aren't what he expected them to be this coming school year. I'm sure many other parents have to also. I'll leave you with this. As well-respected, smart members of the board, we could go to the FDA and find out what the guidelines are for acceptable levels of E. coli in our food. We can find out acceptable levels of mercury in our water. We have an acceptable level and a guideline set by the board for what our expectation is 29 students could be at Nap Elementary. I wouldn't feed my children anything on the higher threshold of those guidelines, and I certainly don't expect us to educate them on the higher end of that spectrum either. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.[1381.01][1381.01](Applause).
Hi. My name is Susan Daubert. I live at 1962 Bishopwood Boulevard in Harleysville, zip code 19438. I'm here tonight, I've already sent emails to Dr. Dietrich and to Mr. Ron Martiello, the principal at Nash Elementary, which is where my, one of my six children will be attending this fall. As many of you may be aware, back on July 14 of this year, the Busted Road Bridge was, Busted Road was closed for the demolition and rebuilding of the Busted Road Bridge, and the projected timeline for this project, when the road will be closed until is May of 2015, essentially the entire school year. We live on, we walk to Nash. Liberty Bell Drive is the road that the school is on, and we live on one of the side streets in our development. I've been, we lived in the neighborhood 21 years. I've had students at Nash since 1997. We walk to school. All of the bus stops are on the Nash side of the neighborhood. I live on the opposite side. My children need to cross Liberty Bell to get to Nash. I also have a student at the high school, a daughter who's a junior, whose bus stop is on the Nash side, and I have a daughter joining Penfield this year, is a 7th grader, who'll be walking across Liberty Bell. Since the road was closed on July 14, the traffic through our neighborhood has grown exponentially. The, it is a madhouse. It is an absolute madhouse. It is not, the designated detour is Rittenhouse Road, which has no driveways coming out feeding into the road. There's, on our street, on Liberty Bell Drive, there, it's a curve. It's an S curve. It's a hill. Nash is kind of on the top of it, and there are driveways that feed into Liberty Bell. This is not a safe place for people to detour, but it is, as Police Chief Dickinson said to me, it's like water. Traffic's like water. It finds the easiest way to get around, and we've seen a ton of traffic and people not obeying the speed limits. The township, when I approached them, three days after the bridge closed, they assured me they were doing everything they could. I'm asking you, as a school board, to also do everything you can. This is not a Nash problem. This is a North Penn problem. It affects every child in our neighborhood that goes to Nash, Penfield, the high school, Christopher Dock, Lancel Catholic, and Corpus Christi. We're talking almost 100 children, not a few, just a couple kids. And my concern with the kids walking across the street in the morning, the high school bus stop is at 6:40. It's very dark at that time of day, and the cars sped through there before we had the Busted Road closed. When I talked with township, I was told that they were going to do a traffic study, but they will not do it until school starts because they want to get a true feeling of what the school, how the traffic through the school area will be impacted. They cannot just put stop signs in front of Nash, make it a four-way stop because of legal issues. There is, they did repaint the crosswalk. They did put another speed limit sign on Liberty Bell. I asked about the possibility of hiring a crossing guard for that part of Liberty Bell. I was told it would cost $13,000 for one year of a crossing guard, half being paid by the township, half being paid by the school board. I'm asking you to strongly consider spending a very, very small amount of money to place a crossing guard to the cost of $6,500 for one year. We're not asking it permanently. We're asking for one year to increase the safety for all of our children, again, not just the kids that walk to Nash, but all the kids in the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
We can reach out to the township over that matter and have, you want to have Facilities do it? Or if you want to have John reach out to the township, see if they're willing to do it? They don't have to do a traffic study to install a crossing guard. They just have to agree to do it.
(Inaudible).
Right. Because the crossing guard actually works for the township, not the school district.
Right.
But we would be willing to do that. With the bridge closed, I've been down there myself, the traffic is all ruru right in front of the school.
Yes. It's been horrible.
Yeah. And that is a mean thoroughfare.
And it's just for one year. I mean, even if they push it back, you know, scheduled to be completed by May of 2015, even if it adds a couple more months, we still have to worry about it for September of next year. This is just for this school year. It's all I'm asking.
The hiring process may take a little bit of time, but we have enough time before school starts to make those decisions, so. Can we reach out, John? Mr. Struble? Can we reach out to the township and see if they're willing to do that without the traffic study?
We've had a very good working relationship with Townments, and obviously because the high school's there in Townments and with other schools, and we could probably accommodate that relatively fast before school gets going, especially since they've already painted the lines.
Yeah.
And plus, there is a cost of the traffic study, which may help offset.
The cost will be $3,000 for the township to pay.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. We may be able to avoid billing that.
I'd rather, yeah, the money go right to the crossing guard instead.
They may, they may need that traffic study for other things they may wish to do, like reducing the speed limit or something else, but that's beyond this question. We might be able to solve the problem faster.
Yeah. I was just thinking. Is the crossing guard the bottom of the hill?
Yes. That's for the Busted Road.
That's for the Busted Road.
Because the street's blocked off now, do they still need her?
Yes. Because the condominiums that are there, those children still need to cross Busted. There's still traffic coming.
And Busted's still rated as a hazard.
Busted's open at that end, because what happens is they go up to the bridge, and they must make a left turn at the firehouse to go down onto Rittenhouse, which is the official detour.
Okay.
So yes, that crossing guard has to stay for the children in the Townments and condominium complex.
Could you reach out to the township officials tomorrow, Mr. Littling, and see if we can come to a meeting of minds with that issue? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else, please? Could you also put your number down there so we can contact you to tell you what's going on?
(Inaudible). Okay. I don't need a pen.[1768.97]
Hey, how you guys doing? I haven't seen you for like, what, about three years now?
Been a while.
So, is your name, oh, the name is Ken Krebs, it's Halffield Borough. And what I come to talk about tonight is nothing like what they're talking about, it's a different subject of matter, okay? Because right now, tonight, America is in decline, okay? And what I mean by that is only 47% of the people in America at this present moment are paying taxes, okay? And of those 30, 47% that are paying taxes, another 36% of those people out of 100% are in debt, and they have debt collectors chasing after them, trying to get money, okay? And as the report was today, 23% of the people since 2008, their income has declined substantially from 2008 by 23%, okay? And if you give those teachers a 1% raise, for every 1%, at least 1,000 people are going to go without food because they have to pay their property tax and then they won't be able to afford the food. And there's going to be people that are hungry. And if you look at the cupboards in the different townships, the cupboards, because I donate food to the homeless, is much, much higher than what it used to be. You've got to think about this kind of stuff when you're doing negotiations with those teachers. They don't deserve an increase because the average increase right now for people is one penny this year. And the amount of people that are unemployed right now is 90 million, and the labor participation rate is 62.8% out of 100. That means only 62.8% of the people, that's a 40-year low of people that are trying to pay taxes for school. Most people don't have the money to pay taxes, they're on unemployment. There, there's 11 million people on disability. The people on disability are supposed to pay the school tax? I don't think so. So, when you're talking to those teachers, you tell them, people can't pay for it, okay?
Excuse me, just, just want to add.
Yeah.
If the people, you said 1,000 people?
Yeah.
Couple of things to think about. Apply for the homestead exemption on your income tax, or your, your tax bill this year. We got $197 back.
I know about that.
Okay, but I'm saying, you need to advertise that to people. Also, if they're seniors, they can also get money back from the state, depending on your income level.
Here's the other thing, do you realize, do you realize that when people are paying their mortgage, 40% of your mortgage right now is for school tax? 40%! So, you know, 60% is for you just living a house, the other 40% is going to the school.
Right. And also, the board is, if you notice, the board has been committed to the, to, no tax increases greater than the Act 1 index. That's, that has always been our commitment.
Yeah, and the third thing is, if you think about Philadelphia for a second, I have a friend in Philadelphia, has a teacher there. In Philadelphia, they don't have toilet paper for the bathroom, they don't have pencils, they don't have books. The kids don't even take books home because they can't afford them. This school district has to tighten the budget too, because Philadelphia is an example of what's going to happen down the road. If we keep raising taxes, we are going to be Philadelphia where people won't be able to pay their school tax, and we're, you're going to be in such trouble, just like Philadelphia. That is what is coming this direction if we don't stop giving these increases.
Do you take the pen? Yes.
There wasn't a pen.
There wasn't?
There was.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kathleen Waters. I don't know if I can multitask. I live at 1026 North Line Street in Lansdale. My children, I have one child in Nap and one child in Pendale. My daughter is in sixth grade at Nap. Dr. Dietrich, I kind of wanted to ask you, I know you have considered it, you've heard the other parents, what's the tipping? You said if there's 87 students, you'll probably put another teacher in. Well, if that drops down to 85, does that mean you won't? I mean, where's the, the consideration based on the enrollment? So, we can kind of understand what to expect. And I'd also like to, there's quite a few Nap parents here, if you could raise your hands so you can understand the support that is coming from the school. These are the concerned parents. And Nap is a wonderful school, but I kind of wanted to understand so we can understand the expectations of what we're looking at.
Kathleen, I'll give you a very quick summary, but I'll invite you to call me and then we can talk in more detail about this. But just in terms of a quick summary and how we look at that whole thing, we do have class size guidelines, so we apply those class size guidelines. And then we take an additional step after that where we look at the particulars within that particular school or the particular classes, and we look at some of the maybe unique or special needs within that kind of a class setting and determine if there's anything that needs to be done because of that. So, and then there's another consideration always, which is, is there even physically room to add another class? And if not, then we have to take some other steps to be able to address whatever concerns we have. So, we're looking at all of that at Nap Elementary and seeing what we can possibly do.
And when I give you a call, can you tell me what the capacity is for each one of the mods to, in order to meet fire code?
We can do that.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Dietrich does have the, the freedom to make this decision. He has to verify the enrollment, he has to make sure he has consistent guidelines applied across the district, not just at one school. He's going to do that, and he already has permission to resolve this problem, so he is working on that. But he is charged with verifying that all these people who are registered are actually going to be there, because we have had experiences in the past where we have added other classes and then 17 people out of a class don't show up. So, there's an issue always on both ends. I don't think that's going to happen in this case. We've had dropping enrollment all the way up to the end of the, end of the, you know, the timeframe, unfortunately. He's going to make that decision real short, so you're going to have an answer probably within a day or two. You want to speak? Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Amy Agress. I live at 241 Lower Valley Road, North Wales, PA. I would also like to talk about class size this evening, but not at Nap Elementary, at North Wales Elementary. Currently, sixth grade at North Wales Elementary is showing 29 students, split between, 29 students per two classes, which means that my child that is going into sixth grade this year is going to lose the opportunity to switch between multiple teachers, which I feel is a really important thing for him to learn how to, one, not, not only stay organized amongst multiple teachers as he transitions into middle school the following year, he's going to lose that opportunity because now he's going to switch back and forth between two teachers, which he has done for the past two years in elementary school. So, he's going to go from having two teachers this upcoming year to possibly anywhere between five and eight teachers once he gets to middle school. I really feel, I've, I've taught 10 years in sixth grade myself, and incoming sixth graders, I taught in a true middle school that was sixth, seventh and eighth graders. And the biggest point, the biggest struggle for the incoming sixth graders was organization, learning how to manage five major teachers plus four, four art, music and the different humanities that they would go to. It's difficult. It's difficult on children, learning not only to come into a middle school and adjust to a new surrounding, adjust to everything that middle school brings, but now managing five different teach, five different major subjects. One of the great things about, about sixth grade in North Penn Elementary was they had three teachers. And so, that starts that transition, it starts to help the children learn how to stay organized amongst the kids. So, now 29 kids per class in also a mod is really stretching the limit. I have a bright, very bright child, and he's lost over the last two years because he's had 29 students and the teachers have had to stretch themselves. Five kids, you go from 24 kids to 29 kids in a classroom, it's a major difference. You go from 27 to 29. It is a big difference. Those kids need the student, the teacher's attention and they don't get it when they're increased up to 29 kids. I said to my son tonight, if I had the opportunity to talk, what would you want me to say to these school board members? Why would you want there to be an additional teacher in sixth grade? And his, his statement to me was, I want more attention from my teacher. He's bright, and he doesn't get that attention because he's bright. Because the kids that don't understand the material that's being taught to them need more of the teacher's attention than a, a bright student does. So, we're, we're, these bright kids are missing out because they're sitting there. I asked his fourth grade teacher, he's bored, and she said, well, that's because he's getting it on the first try, and I have to teach it 10 times. I said, so what's he supposed to do the other nine times? And she just looked at me. She didn't have an answer. So, you're asking kids that are bright or, or on the other end of the spectrum, kids that need additional help. You know, it's just, it's just, they need the additional teacher. They need the class sizes to be smaller because it's better for our students. And that's why we're all here, right? That's why you're here, that's why all of the parents are here tonight, because we're concerned about the students. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move forward with our agenda, Dr. Dietrich.
Regarding item four there, Mr. President, you might want to do the minutes, and then in terms of committee reports, many of our committees haven't met.
Let me, let me do that. I'll run it. All right, I'm going to recommend approval of the minutes of the July 17, 2014 action meeting as circulated.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schelling, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions about the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. I'm going to go through committee reports, starting with Support Services, Mr. Schelling.
Yeah, we haven't had a Support Service Committee since the last board meeting, and our August 25th Support Service Meeting has been canceled. So, our next scheduled meeting will be for Monday, September 29th at 6:00 PM here at the Educational Service Center. End of report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Education, Community and Policy, Mrs. Leonard.
Thank you. We did have a meeting last night. Discussion topics included information items and one action item. First, we talked about data regarding the two-year growth for students receiving elementary reading interventions. These results indicate that students receiving reading interventions are closing achievement gaps with their peers. It is anticipated that revisions to the seventh grade reading and English curricula this year will accelerate student reading achievement as designed. Another topic that we discussed was the final exam exemption practice for high school students who met certain requirements. The exemption criteria for the district as well as for other districts in Montgomery, in Montgomery County were presented to the committee. Administration and the High School's School Improvement Team will discuss the current exam exemption practice and develop a recommendation for revising the practice at the North Penn High School. And also, North Penn School District was recently notified by the state that three of the secondary schools are required to participate in Youth Pennsylvania Survey. I think it's called Healthy Youth Pennsylvania Survey. This survey will be conducted in the fall of 2014. The school district will comply with the procedures for this survey, including opt-out provisions for parents. I, I believe that survey has to do with smoking and, and health issues. And so, it's going to be given at Pendale, Penfield and High School? Yeah. Okay. Also, we discussed the new board policy on benefits eligibility. The policy stipulates that working 30 hours a week is required to be eligible for benefits. This requirement will apply to new employees. All current employees will be grandfathered in. In addition to the agenda items, community members expressed concerns about sixth grade enrollment at Nap Elementary School. Class size guidelines as well as the procedure for monitoring enrollment changes were reviewed. District administration will continue to monitor enrollment and staffing at all grade levels throughout the month of August. Our next ECP committee meeting will be on Monday, September 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. The North Penn Education Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. Well, Monday's the day, the golf tournament is finally here, the annual golf classic, and we could not be any more excited. We are sold out, I think for the first time, in terms of golfers. We have more sponsorship than we have had in many years. We hope the 13th annual event on Monday will net $20,000. I want to thank everyone in advance for their role in this year's success, from donors to players to volunteers and Mother Nature, who I know is going to give us a glorious day. As a reminder, the foundation will also hold a charity luncheon on October 5th at Bacall. Restaurant in North Wales, tickets will go on sale soon for this event. The annual report is currently at the printer, and I'm excited to share it with my fellow school board members next month. It will also be an outline for the entire community to review our successes. I'm looking forward to tomorrow's mornings, monthly meeting at the foundation, we will discuss the year ahead. And I just want to say, since there's so many parents here, what do we use the money for? Teachers apply for grants for special programs for your children. So, I think people need to know what we use that money for. Any questions about the foundation can be directed to Christine Liberowski at the ESC. Thank you.
Take a drink. Thank you. Uh, thank you. You okay? Finance, Mr. O'Donnell.
Finance Committee Report for Tuesday, August 12th, 2014. The July Finance Meeting was canceled, so there is no report. The August Meeting will be canceled due to summer vacations, and although there are only a few informational items to review, they can wait till the September Meeting. On a good note, the audit has started, and we're expecting a report back from our CPA firm in October. We're getting back to where we were years ago, first, not last. The September Meeting will be September 29th, 6:30 PM, right here at the ESC, following Support Services. End of report.
Thank you, Frank. Safe Schools, Mrs. Murphy.
Oh, yeah, you got it right. The Safe Schools Committee has not met since last board meeting. The next meeting of the Safe Schools is Tuesday, September 2nd, 6:30 here at the ESC.
Thank you. Personnel, Mr. Kerr.
Personnel Committee did not meet in August, therefore no report.
No report.
Imagine that. That's something that I, at least a little different than I normally say. We met, and I can't say anything about it, so...
Thank you. North Monco Technical Career Center, you didn't have a meeting, so no report? Is that no report?
Monday.
Monday?
Monday is our meeting. There was no, no meeting in July.
Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit?
We also do not meet in July, we will meet next Wednesday. Thank you.
No report, okay. All right, let's move forward with the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval of settlement agreements for students 08, 12, 14, 1, 2 and 3, and 4, whose names are on file in the office of the Superintendent.
Motion by Mr. Schelling, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of agreements for tuition in lieu of free and appropriate education for students whose names are on file in the office of the Superintendent, as listed, 08, 12, 14, 5, 6 and 7.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock. Seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of an increase of 2.5% to the salary hourly rate schedule of non-union support staff for the 1415 fiscal year, retroactive to July 1st of 2014, and implementation of the Custom PC 102070 Core Medical Plan effective January 1st, 2015, per item BA4.
Motion by Mr. Brown.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the Act 93 Administrative Compensation Plan effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2016, inclusive of the Custom PC 102070 Core Medical Plan effective January 1st, 2015.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend adoption of the resolution regarding the disposition of fund balance, thereby committing $1 million in additional funds for the purpose of meeting future PSERS funding mandates and thereby assigning $3 million in additional funds to be utilized for the event of fulfilling outstanding medical and prescription drug claims made by district employees, per item BA5, A through C.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell. Seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I just have a question between E and F, actually. According to the resolution, we're assigning $3 million to be utilized in the event of outstanding medical and prescription drug claims, and then also on the second resolution, we're transferring $3 million to be utilized to fulfill outstanding medical and prescription drug claims. Is, is that, are we...
It's the same $3 million. This is a great question. This is a great question, it's the same three million dollars, it's a two-step process. First, we have to be able to dispose of fund balance and commit those funds. And then, in the fourteen-fifteen fiscal year, the actual transfer comes out of that funding then that goes into our Internal Service Fund. The Internal Service Fund is something where we pay our claims from. So, we pay the bills as they come in from there, we also put money into that Internal Service Fund every paycheck. Some of that comes from the employees because they have a contribution percentage, the other comes from the school district. So, we set up the equivalent premiums, we assign then what the employee contributes, we assign then what the district contributes. It all goes into the Internal Service Fund, and then we pay our claims from that fund. So, we're going to infuse the three million dollars into that fund out of the fourteen-fifteens budgetary year to be able to accomplish what we need to accomplish in that Internal Service Fund. So, it's really a two-step process, so good question.
Two-step process, one fund.
Correct. It's the same money, you just have to do it in two steps.
It was an excellent question, I got confused when I first read it myself.
Okay, see, I do read this stuff.
I have, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Recommend adoption of the resolution regarding self-insurance fund transfer for the two thousand fourteen-fifteen fiscal year, thereby transferring three million dollars in previously assigned, which you just did a minute ago, funds to the Internal Service Fund, Medical Self-Inurance Fund, per item BA six, A through B.
Motion by Mr. Schelling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the financial institutions that are listed as depositories for the North Penn School District funds, per item forty-seven, fourteen.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell. Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the transfer of the TransFinder Transportation Software License to North Penn School District for the price of thirty thousand dollars, as described in the attached notification letter, and then the discontinuation of the Transpar Management Contract effective January, excuse me, September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, per item forty-eight, fourteen, A through B.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Kerr. All those in favor?
Wait a minute, I want to get a comment. I just want to express my appreciation and say thank you.
Yes, that's, that is a significant investment.
Can we do it when you're not here?
Mrs. Johnson, I guess.
I appreciate it, I'm very grateful, I'm very taking advantage of it.
Yeah, that's right, didn't we? That's right, we did that when he wasn't here. You're right. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Recommend approval of bids, per item BA seven, A through D, as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell. Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Recommend approval of the personnel items, A through C, as listed.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan. Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Recommend approval of contracts, per item BA ten, copies of which are on file in the office of the Business Administration.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan. Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of alternative placements, per item BA eleven, copies of which are on file in the office of Special Education.
Motion by Mr. Schelling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Let's move forward with the finance report, Mr. Shiroki.
Thank you, Mr. President. This financial report is for the month of July, two thousand fourteen. Cash receipts for the month of July were eighteen million, two-hundred-twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars and twenty-nine cents. The cash disbursements for July totaled thirteen million, three-hundred-seventy-two thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. And the total available funds through the end of the month were sixty-five million, two-hundred-eighty thousand, thirty-two dollars. Also, just a quick reminder to our property owners in the North Penn School District, September second is the end of the discount period, the two percent discount for the real estate taxes. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, let's move forward sanction and approval of invoices.
Mr. President, the total sanction checks that we're seeking approval for tonight total fourteen million, nine-hundred-ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars and seventeen cents. End of report.
I need a motion? Motion by Mr. Schelling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other business. I make a motion to approve the amendment to the employment agreement between Superintendent Curtis R. Dietrich and the Board of School Directors of North Penn School District. A copy of said agreement is on file in the district offices. Second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions?
I'd like to make a comment, please.
Go ahead.
First of all, I want to, I want to, you know, thank Dr. Dietrich and recognize all of the great stuff that he does. On tonight's agenda, we've approved contracts for non-union support service for the administrators, and now an increase for Dr. Dietrich. And we've also been supplied with a list of his accomplishments, which are many. But what I do want to point out is that an average score of above ninety, becoming in the top five percent, increased advanced placement enrollment, earned national recognition for the high school, is one of the best high schools. Also, is accomplished by the teachers that are employed here. And I, and I do want to emphasize that if we are recognizing all of the great people that work here, that we have to recognize all groups that work here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I do too.
No, I just, I just want to say, one of the reasons that I ran for the board four years ago was because I was so upset about the upheaval in the community. And I really thought I could make a best difference, and I can't. And I just have to say it, I just feel like I can't. I've always been involved in international diplomacy, you know, people getting along, everybody rowing the same way. And with everything that we have in this district, I won't really feel content. I feel, I will feel such discontent until we all have everything settled. And I'm voting for Dr. Dietrich tonight, I'm voting for his increase because I absolutely know what he's done, I've worked with the IU. He and I have worked very closely, believe it or not, Mr. Sullivan, you do not know how closely we have worked. And he knows how much I appreciate, everyone in this building does. But on the other hand, I'm not content because we still have school to start in the fall, and we have things to deal with. And I'm very sad that I can't make a difference.
I'm sorry, you feel that way? I think you do make a difference, I appreciate your, I appreciate your counsel when I. When I worked with you on ECP, your counsel was very good. You as a teacher and me being a teacher, I've, I've felt that your influence has been very effective for us.
Karen, press the button.
I just don't want to go through all this turmoil that we went through four years ago, and it was not pleasant.
You mean, you feel you haven't made any difference being on Safe Schools for what we've done? Come on.
You didn't even vote for me, Frank.
How much have we done on Safe Schools? How much have we done on Safe Schools? Come on.
We've done, Frank, we've done a lot, she's allowed to, she's entitled to her opinion.
That's not the issue right now.
Listen, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments to add before I do? Any money? All right, I've worked with Dr. Dietrich, I've worked with five superintendents since I've been on the board, and you are the best.
Well, thank you.
You've saved the North Penn taxpayers tens of millions of dollars with your solid leadership, your innovation, and your good ideas. You've been able to hold your ground when you feel that you're, that others don't like what you're doing. You can justify what you do, you're a strong leader, and I think you're the guy that can take us to those settlements that we're looking for, and Carolyn was mentioning. So, I am very happy that you're here, and I hope that you continue your career, and I hope it ends here someday. Maybe twenty-five years from now, when you're very, very old. That would be wonderful, too. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I do appreciate the board's support and the approval of this amendment to the employment agreement. Certainly very, very proud to work at North Penn School District with all of the employees that we have, all of the parents and the students that we're working with to educate to the fullest extent possible. Just the things I mentioned earlier in the opening remarks, very proud of the student achievement that we have here. Certainly the management of the funds to try to maximize their impact with our students here in North Penn. Look forward to many continued years here in North Penn. So, thank you very much to all the board members for your support, appreciate that very much.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.
We do need to have just a moment if we could, if the board members could just wait one minute.